Tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, Blackberries, PDA, and any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please be either be placed in silent mode or turned off. And for items that are not public hearings, I will open the floor and provide an opportunity for the public to comment. The roll call, please. Mr. Savinat.
Mr. Edmonds.
There.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Kempin. Mr. Krent. Mr. Sanzika.
Here.
Mr. Shepke.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Strat.
Mr. Tegel.
Here.
Six are present, so we have a call.
Thank you. All right. Item number two, the approval of the agenda. And I have a motion, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Edmonds, prepare.
Mr. Sanzika.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Tegel.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Item number three, minutes to the January 8 regular meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or alterations? If not, a motion, please.
A motion to approve as published.
Mr. Edmonds.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shepke.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Tegel.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
All right. Item number four, public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak in the public realm that does not have a not an item on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one, we'll move to number five. Item five, zoning board of appeals report. And the reportee is not here.
Reportee is not here, and I neglected to get a zoning board of appeals report so we can catch everyone up at the next meeting. And the DDA report that's next will be just as short because there was no DDA meeting yet.
All right. Maybe we have a planning and zoning report.
Yes. Hopefully, everyone noticed that as per state law, we put together a 2012 commission annual report. And when you write all this stuff down, we accomplish a lot. You saw the we had a number of zoning ordinance amendments, some text amendments, annual rezonings. We had a sustainable development project and a number of site plan and specialty and PUD projects. So, pretty busy year, got a lot accomplished. 2013 is looking like it's going to remain pretty busy. One thing that's that kind of struck me in 2012 is the number of residential developments we had. You know, we had, besides site condominiums and the residential component of the PUD, we had the Regent's Park apartment building. So, we have we've had a pretty wide range of residential type developments, which I think is a good sign moving forward. Another item just to mention is we are working on an update to the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. That we I actually assisted with the previous plan. They're required by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources to qualify for grants. They expire they're good for five years, and then they expire. So, our previous plan just expires this year, or actually expired in 2012. And I don't know if we're going to apply for any state grants, but we're eligible if we do. But even if we don't, it's a good idea to prioritize for the community to prioritize their Parks and Recreation goals, you know, just make see what the community wants. We've had a survey, an online survey. We used an online tool for gathering comments called Michigan called My Community Remarks that Carlisle assisted us with. And we're working on putting a draft together to present to the Parks and Recreation Board, and the planning commission will see a copy before it goes to city council. You're not required to, but just as a courtesy, we'll let you see it and look at it and get your comments.
I just had one comment on the annual report. I think it was really an excellent report. I enjoyed reading, reviewing all the things that we did this last year. But I just wondered if maybe that might be appropriate to be included on the planning commission site. As it's likely to.
That's a great idea. Yeah, I think it's I think we can we can we did one last year as well. We can we can put them all there. I think that's that's good.
Mr. Stratsen.
Maybe a segue into this. The Parks Recreation Survey is part of the master plan. Is that going to be included in our recommendation sometime during this year on the review of the master plan? Every five years, we got to do that? It could be part of it? Ben?
Are you talking about the actual record plan as part of the master plan?
I know that we're going to make a report. We've got to review the master plan every five years.
This is the fifth year or the sixth year.
Yep. Is that Parks Recreation Report going to be part of that, or is it just happen to be coincidental, it's a review?
It's a separate plan. It is not necessarily it should have some rationale for master plan, but it's a separate own plan, and just coincidentally, it's five years at the same time we're doing the master plan update.
And it's very, very specifically focused on Parks and Recreation. And if there's anything that, you know, that kind of jumps out and is relevant for master planning, we'll include it. But the master plan's more related to more general, you know, development.
Mr. Sanzika, do you have a question?
A few years ago, I recall, Mr. Miller giving us an update on the different files that were open, you know, with the statuses of them. And I wondered if that we could do that occasionally. You know, I know it's probably a lot of work to update that, but like, for example, the Brazilian Steakhouse on Rochester Road, if it we approved it, but I was it, I believe it is, they did away with the plan as something else is proposed. So, something like that. I would really appreciate, out of my curiosity, to see where some of these things are and if they canceled the plan, if they haven't come back, or what the status is on.
So, are you talking about pardon me while I move, Brett. You're talking about projects that received planning commission approval.
Yes.
But for whatever reason.
Right.
Or if they're ongoing, in the construction phase, or, you know, they've been, you know, they're ready to open or whatever. I'm just curious where they are and just occasionally, I don't, you know, maybe. Yeah. Once every six months or once a year or something, just to give us a general update on where some of these plans are. Well, what we've we've got the planning commission portal, or excuse me, the planning department development portal, which has all projects from the time we get the application until the time of construction's finished, and they've got a certificate of occupancy, which would cover those that are under construction. However, for those projects that are halted for whatever reason, they wouldn't necessarily be on there, although we they'd be on there for some time because they would have gone, we would have inputted them when we got the application. And so, I guess a quick answer is we already kind of do that on our portal, which is available online.
You could give us a summary. I'd appreciate it.
Okay. That sounds yeah, we'll you want like one like a list type of a like a spreadsheet?
Ongoing, it's suspended. You know, it's in planning stage or?
Right. Just a simple status. Okay.
I question the O'Brien Construction Project, which you guys in the Sustainability Committee saw, didn't you? Did that not get to the planning report? I didn't see it.
That was 2000, I want to say that was 2011.
Was it?
I think it was. I think it was the first. The first one. Yeah. It was, yeah, it was because the Sustainable Development Provisions were brand new, and I think that was just at the end of 2011.
Okay.
Because we adopted the zoning ordinance, then we did the SDP provision, so I think that was under 2011. And now that you mentioned that, we're talking about, I've already contacted the O'Brien Construction people, and we're going to get a tour in the in the spring, late spring, early summer, once the plants that really have a chance to get established and look nice. They're they want to give us a tour and show them some of the sustainable elements that you've got on the site, so that'll be a good visit.
Great question. Mr. Schultz.
Building on Mr. Sanzika's comment, I was going to be asking it later, but I'll ask now. The Brazilian Steakhouse is under construction. Has is it the same site plan? We know it's a different restaurant.
It's close. It's it's a different ownership.
Close enough that we don't see it again?
Well, yeah. I mean, yeah. Yep.
That all the elements are there?
Yeah.
Were there before?
Yep.
Well, they were in front of us.
Yes.
The new owners and their?
Not the new ones, no. No, not the new ones.
They just went to council.
They may have went to council for liquor license.
Yes. They came in front of us.
Unless my memory is.
I think you told us about it.
Yeah.
Some pura or something like that.
Yeah. What type of restaurant is it? It's a Japanese steakhouse.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Shepke.
Is there going to be anything done this year on the agenda on the sign ordinances? We had talked about last year about reviewing the sign ordinances, and there's new guidelines in that kind of the state level. I wondered if we were going to spend any time, Brett, on that.
I can't answer that. I'll have to get with we've still got a Mr. Hudson will, I think, mentioned in the last meeting, we've still got a relatively minor tweak to the ordinance that went to the city manager's office and is kind of stalled. So, I'll have to check the status of that and get back to planning commission.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Let's move on to item number eight, our first step, its interpretation of the zoning ordinance, the residential treatment and recovery facility. And who's presenting?
We're going to kind of jointly do it. We set up a tour of the facility in Shelby Township. It was last Thursday. It was a public meeting. It was noticed it was noticed on the on a bulletin board, and we could anyone could have attended. It was basically essentially a tour of the facility. We the there's been a group that has contacted the planning department. They talked about introducing a sober living facility. Did I get that right? Sober living facility? A sober living sober living facility in Troy. And we were we had some very informal dialogue about whether it was whether it was a permitted use. And when we reviewed the ordinance to determine if it was permitted or not, it's it's not included in the list of uses in the zoning ordinance. And state law requires that communities need to provide for all uses if there's a demonstrated need for the use and if the use is a legal use. So, there's no there's no specific category for sober living facilities. So, what we did was, as part of our due diligence and research, what this organization was looking for, we set up the tour of the facility. We met with representatives of the organization. There were people that worked in the facility, and there was a resident of the facility who was kind enough to to talk to us and answer our questions. It was there was four planning commission members there, and all four who were on the tour are here this evening. And it was a the facility itself, again, sober living facility, it was, I believe, for eight residents.
Six.
Six residents, excuse me. It was in a single it was a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood. They talked about the structured environment that that the residents are in, the fact that representatives of the organization, other and other people involved in providing structure to residents, and they talked about how the program worked. But I thought it was very helpful, very, very helpful, very informative. And, Mr. Chairman, would you think would it be beneficial if we take five minutes to talk about what we saw there? Any any certainly any feedback of?
Brett, can I also interrupt to, Brett, that meeting was open to the public and published, and directions were given to the public?
It was it met all the requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
Just wanted that on the record.
Absolutely. Anyone could have attended. They would have had to get there on their own and get home on their own, like all of us did, but that was also part of the notice. It was clear that that so.
Thank you.
I thought I thought it was very helpful. I think when you hear when you hear terminology terminology such as sober living, or you hear, you know, addiction, you know, drugs, alcohol addiction, words like that, I think that there's a negative perception that maybe, you know, kind of clouds your mind. And I thought it was it was very helpful to really kind of humanize, for lack of a better word, the facility. And it was I thought it was very helpful to meet a resident who was honest about about his experience living there. I thought it was it was very helpful, very informative. Now, the facility that we're that we're talking about in Troy, based on dialogue we've had, is potentially much bigger, basically four times the size in terms of the number of residents. So, I would imagine, you know, four times the programming and the staff and the parking and all, you know, all the all the secondary impacts that come along with more intensity. But just for for that scale and that that environment, I thought it was very informative to me. What did what did the planning commissioners think?
I thought there was a demonstrable need for a facility like this. It filled a gap that I think exists when the treatment becomes sober.
Yeah.
I totally agree. I was very impressed. I would like to learn a little bit more about their experience at the early part of this when it came up. Was that was that do they have a use in the zoning ordinance for this particular facility?
No. In Shelby Township, I can't answer that. But but there's enough there's three representatives here that perhaps could talk about their experience in another community.
The other thing that I want to bring up, I think it's not just sobriety type issue. I think there's also some some residents who are mentally challenged, too. Is that true?
Yeah. I think I think the.
They're using literature anyway.
The petitioner would probably do a better job of describing that than I would, to be fair.
Mr. Schultz.
Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. Unlike some of you, I don't control my own schedule. I just, having listened to what Brett has said so far, I'm interested to hear where we're going to find a single-family home in Troy that can accommodate 24 people.
And they have an answer for that.
Yeah.
There's an answer.
There is an answer. So, I think my my thought is, if we could give the applicant, maybe go ahead.
Did you have anything to add?
Well, I was very impressed. Years ago, I had had some dealings with Ellen on, which was a rehabilitation type thing, but it was there was probably most of it was with a criminal background. And I was very impressed with the facility and what went on there, and it gave me a whole new outlook on what they're the wonderful things that they're trying to accomplish. Because I think just about every family's been touched in one way or another by either alcoholism or some form of addiction. And I think to see that there is there's alternatives, because the law tends to drop a lot of tends to drop the ball on what's out there right now. So, I really congratulate them for what they're doing. And I was very impressed with the presentation there and to meet meet everybody.
I would also second what Gordon was saying. I mean, the it wasn't just the clinical side of it. There's a compassionate side of it, and there's a an approach that, from what we're reading and what we heard, there's a success rate that the other systems out there aren't seen. And it's it's I think maybe you used the word humanizing or but it 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 was something that looks like is going to have a good future in it and really help get folks back into society into, you know, a good way. And so, I thought it was very good. So.
Given the fact that that the applicant, potential applicant is here, and they would do a much better job of describing, you know, what what exactly the facility entails and what they're what they're seeking, would it be perhaps a good time to have them maybe do a 10-minute presentation on?
Yeah, that would be fun.
What they do and what they're what they're looking for, right?
Please step up to the microphone. Introduce yourselves and it's yours.
Well, my name is David Lord.
Right. The microphone's right behind you.
Oh, sorry.
We can hear you, but that's for.
It doesn't amplify it, just record.
It's a little bit up here. Okay.
So, my name is David Lord. This is Dr. Paul Smith. This is Mike, one of our residents. I want to just let Paul touch and kind of start the process by speaking of the clinical side and the operational side. And then I'll I'll speak to the facility after we kind of kind of dovetail that in.
All right. Well, in substance abuse, there are levels of care. And the beginning level of care, there's typically like early intervention or prevention. And then from there, it goes all the way up to somebody who is probably in danger of some harm to themselves through their use. And they typically go to a detox center. It's usually a hospital base. And you have levels of care in between. So, our facility would be designed for those that have went through medical detox, they're stabilized medically. But there is still patterns of behavior, maybe some very strong triggers in their own home environments or community that leaves them very vulnerable to relapse. So, they would transition down into our sober living home, and it's designed for longer term. Typically, somebody's there for three months to maybe a year. We have one person that's been there for two years. And the goal is to stop this revolving door into relapse into the treatment centers. We see a lot of folks that have been in detox, two, three, four, 10, 15, 20, one person 44 Problem is, is that sober living, in the past, it it gets its origin from the halfway houses and the three-quarter houses. When prisoners were coming out of prison, they would go to a halfway house and so on. But since that time, there's been a use for those that have substance abuse problems. Sometimes they have legal issues related to it, but their legal issues are really driven by the addiction. Once you take care of the addiction, then a lot of that legal illegal behavior kind drives them. So, at our facility, we have we're required to do individual psychotherapy groups. There's a family component, which is very important. A lot of times, the families are involved. Sometimes, they're a strong factor in maintaining the addiction. We have access to our outpatient clinic where we'll take them for psychiatry and addiction medicine. And they're monitored by what we call recovery mentors. These are individuals who are in recovery. They have at least two years of sustained full recovery, and they work with the residents on a daily basis, and they model behavior. They make sure that they're on track with their recovery plan. They help them out in terms of finding work. Some go to school. Over time, we take we have an outcome measure process, too, so we have an initial intake or initial measure, and then we measure them every three months, and we crunch that data and we look at our outcome. We're seeing some good success. I think that one of the main reasons is that we are providing an intensity of monitoring and treatment in our facility that's typically not out there in your sober living homes. A lot of them out there are mainly pure RAM, and there's no hardcore treatment component as part of it. So, that may be suitable for maybe even a lower level of care, somebody who's probably went through ours into something lower. It's important that it's long-term. It's in a natural setting. A lot of the people there come from the communities that we have these houses. So, these are your neighbors. These are the brothers, sisters, fathers, and people that you know. Probably everybody in this room knows a friend or a family member, extended family member that suffers from some form of alcoholism or drug addiction. So, it is a community problem.
So, Paul is has a track record now in Shelby, three, three years in Shelby. So, there's a there's a history here of success and track record. Again, there's there's many sober home living facility that popped up, be it your community around southeastern Michigan, where birds of a feather will flock together without structure. This is what we provide is a very structured environment with accountability, with treatment, with, you know, attendees and trained professionals dealing with people on a regular basis. I'd love for Mike, one of the residents, to step up and introduce himself and share maybe a snippet of his personal experience and and feelings about, you know, Dr. Smith's professional coaching and counseling.
I'm Mike King, resident over in the Sterling Heights facility, recovering alcoholic. I've been in several different facilities over the past couple of years, of which Dr. Smith's is one of the finest, because we get we get the therapy. I'll take you kind of through an average day in the facility. We're, you know, a lot of the addiction type people, people that are addicted, are dual diagnosed. There's some type of depression, anxiety, bipolar, ADD, OCD. There's there's a lot of dual diagnosing going on in our in our world. I'm a resident of Sterling Heights right now, but my real home is Troy, so I'm very passionate about it. I also have affiliated with children in the Troy facility, you know, Troy High School. I also have affiliated with children in the Troy facility, you know, Troy High School. And there, there's some serious problems. We need to catch them early, and you need to get, these facilities work. I'm very passionate about it. These facilities work, these facilities, you're not getting people that are completely crazy and nuts, you're getting your neighbors, your friends, your family, that just have addiction problems. In a typical day, we're held accountable. We, we don't go running around and scaring the neighbors and things of that nature. It's, it's, twice a week, we get therapy. Once a month, we get on-staff psychiatrists. We're treated medically by the staff of Dr. Smith's organization. So, everybody's treated, we're, we're not going to random doctors and things of that nature. We're required to have jobs or go to school. That's, that's a requirement. We're, we have curfews. I mean, I'm 46-years-old, I have a curfew. 11 o'clock during the week, 1:00 on the weekends. Drug testing is random and frequent. Drug testing along with the blow testing for alcohol. So, we're held accountable. It's, it's a pretty safe group of people and environment, and it's necessary. Right now, you know, there's, I don't know if you know the background, but we're petitioning the state to actually regulate a certain, you know, come up with levels of certification, you know, to, to, to better define, to get better treatment for people. Because there's a lot of bad homes out there as well. This is a pretty structured facility, and, you know, I'm, I'm very passionate about it as well. You know, I'm, I believe in this type of treatment, this is extended treatment. This isn't a nut house. This is, this is an extended treatment. It's, it's very helpful. And, and there's a lot of young people out there that are dying today, because there's not more of these facilities, and it's scary. You know, as a father myself, I'm doing my best, so far so good, but I've got to take care of myself, too, so. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. If, if Paul, if you could speak to maybe the application process real quick and the some rules and regs?
Or someone coming in?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh. Well, we'll do a brief screening, well, not a brief screening, we do, we do, a lot of times, we'll, we'll receive a call from a detox center, and I'll do like a phone screening, then they'll come in, and we'll do a more intense, comprehensive screening. And we determine whether they're going to be suitable for this level of care. We don't allow patients who have a history of violent behavior or criminal sexual conduct, they're excluded from our program. Those that have substance abuse problems typically do have some run-ins, run-ins with the law, and those that have alcohol problems have more than one or two drunk drivings. But again, once the substance abuse is dealt with and the mental health condition is stabilized, then you see that dry up, the criminal behavior goes away. So, they come in, we go over the rules with them, they get oriented to the program, the treatments they receive, the staff that are involved. There is a contract that's about six pages long. That's one of the first things that we go over, over with them. And it just lays out all the rules. It has the curfew, it has behaviors that are, that could be grounds for them being discharged from the program. They're common sense, you can't hit anybody, you can't obviously use in the house, you can't steal, those kinds of things. But it's also, if you don't do, if you don't follow through on your treatment, if you break curfew, if you're being obnoxious to others, too. I mean, there's a point in which, if it becomes disruptive to the others, then we have to do something about it. So, all the rules make sense. And I think that when you have a, a good set of rules and you have some people following them, new people come in and just kind of, they kind of go along with it, it's a lot easier. Once in a while, you'll get a tough one that, that bugs it. Usually, we're able to screen them out early on, if we feel that they're just not really motivated to change, so.
In addition to the clinical care, psychological care, we, we're concerned about, you know, athletic, physical condition of, of the residents. So, here in Troy, we intend to have, you know, someone working with, and we have, has been determined how often. But to have activities planned, planned activities and scheduled events where we can get the residents active and help, and also nutritionists. We will, we intend to be hiring a cook for the premises, there's a kitchen large enough and suitable to accommodate cooking on staff. So, that person will be serving lunch and dinner daily. And, and again, nutritionist and, you know, physical exercise. So, it encompasses the whole body, soul, mind, and again, gets, gets people ready to resume their lives.
So, when they're done with the program, they are, you know, our goal is to get them, when they're done with the program, they're functioning independently. A lot of them will go home, or maybe some will move into their own apartment, or, you know, some will go back home to their parents if they're in school, finishing up whatever stuff. The idea is independence and able to maintain a sober lifestyle.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Yeah, Phil?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't have an opportunity to, to go on the tour, but is this in a single-family residential setting, or?
The one that we have in Shelby Township and Sterling Heights is...
So, they have bedrooms and?
Yep.
Which is curious, is there an age limit in the, of the patients?
18 and over.
18 and over?
Yep. And we don't co-mingle gender. That's strictly...
Is it 20, supervised 24 hours a day?
It's not. This, what we're looking at will be, because there will be more people. We have staff there that are there during the morning, into the afternoon, and then we have random showings in the evening. We have, at the mailhouse, we have somebody that's there in the evenings and on the weekends, so, but it's not through the night, and we're doing fine. I'm sorry?
Yeah, I was just curious, what's, so what's the ratio of the staff to the patients?
Well, at the mailhouse, it depends on the day. We have the therapists, we have two recovery mentors, so you have eight patients there, you may have three people there at one time. Typically, there's at least one, somebody there. Again, you have to keep in mind, these people are, a lot of them are working, so during the day, they're working, we'll catch them after work or before, or on the weekends. So, staff can be a little lighter during the day while they're working, and then towards the late afternoon, it may be easier. The mailhouse is the same.
I really admire you for coming here tonight, speaking of, it's really wonderful, you do it.
He's done a remarkable job.
Now, if I could take a minute to speak, and I, I don't want to be redundant on where you're going with this, but of the site, I don't know if everyone can see this, or if you, I'm blowing up here. The property that we're looking at is on Rochester Court, if everyone's familiar. This is I-75 Rochester Road, where it turns into Stevenson and take Rochester Road here and get on Rochester Court. At the end is former Holiday Inn, now a quality. Across the street is another hotel, along with, you know, commercial office building. So, really, around the site, this is a blow-up. Three-quarters of the property to the side and around here, and all across the street is owned commercial. Presently, this, this was, the neat thing about this property, unique, is this was originally a home that was converted to an office. And one thing, if you, if we looked at an office building to, to adapt it, it would have a very institutional feel and look. And again, the idea is, is it's family-oriented, it's, it's close knit, it's, it's a transition. It's, the more of a home environment we can make it, the better. So, again, unique to this is it was originally constructed. Now, there is a secondary home on, on this property, proper secondary building, which is going to be used for administrative purposes. It has no, well, it has a kitchen, well, kitchenette and a bathroom. It has no, to my knowledge, I don't think it was ever used as a home proper. Looks kind of feel like more a little community house, if you will, if you had an apartment building and with a pool back behind, absent the pool, a little kind of community building. So, which is going to be great for the administrative aspects of the business, and some counseling there, as opposed to the residence, the residential building itself. And then the next home will be, and this will be geared for the men. And then the next home here is going to be geared for the women. And then we, the nice thing about it is, we do have ample land for an open area, environment, where we can do, you know, some outdoor activities, some physical exercise, some walking, be it volleyball, you know, badminton, that kind of thing. So, again, it's, I feel very well-suited with the buffering properties being commercial. There are some residential here. And back behind the property is a, is all this back in here is multifamily apartment complex. So, I can, I'll let Brett and Ben speak to, you know, the property and area further.
Do you have any questions for them?
I just had one question. I believe that's fairly close to Morris Elementary School. Are you familiar with Morris Elementary?
I'm sorry, I don't know where the, is it the elementary down on, is that this building down in here?
Yes.
Okay.
It's within, certainly within a mile, that's for sure, a half-mile, probably.
We don't have any issues being close proximity to...
Well, that's one of the other questions I'll ask later, but I, I think something, a change of residency of this, this magnitude really does deserve a public hearing, I mean, a notification to the nearby residents, so.
We'll, we'll address those objections.
Anything else with these gentlemen?
Just related to, and I appreciate David going over the, the property they're interested in, because that's why we're here, is because of this property. So, let's, let's, that's the reality. Having said that, when you, when you are discussing an interpretation of the ordinance, you, what you're, you don't necessarily focus on the, on the property itself, you look at the intent of the ordinance, you look at the spirit of the ordinance, and, and so you don't, I don't want you to get caught up in, in that property and think, boy, what they're talking about is really applicable to that property. Look at, look at it in terms of the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, with the understanding that clearly there's, there's a property involved. But I just want to separate so that we're not focused on that specific property, because when you interpret the ordinance or you amend the ordinance, it's, it applies across the board. Once you interpret it one way, to be, you need to be consistent. So, the next person that comes along, so if you tie it to a property, you're not necessarily, you know, treating all interpretations are all, you know, the same as the other one. So, I just want to state the obvious for everybody. So, if you, if you want to sit down, we could...
Okay. One, just one other comment, if I may. One thing, actually, that will be a positive repercussion by adopting an ordinance to accommodate issues. What you're going to do is really get control over maybe some other sober living facilities that are within your community, and be able to set some guidelines.
We'll get to that, that's a good point, that's a really good point. So, what, if it's okay with the chairman?
Absolutely.
This is a study session, I'd like to kind of make it kind of formal, if, if it's okay with you, and if we have any questions for the, for the potential applicant, we can get them involved as well. So, we've, we've talked about this, and I've looked at the ordinance, and Ben and I, and we've involved some other staff members, and we've gone around and around on this. It's, it's not clear where this, where this fits in. As an example, if, on first blush, it seems like an adult foster care facility. It really does. But then you look at the definition for adult foster care facility, and it specifically prohibits drug and, drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities, that type, that type of facility. So, that kind of clouds things a little bit. Then you, you look at congregant care or independent living, our definitions in our ordinance, they're tied to senior housing. Well, this isn't necessarily, there's not necessarily seniors that are living in these facilities. So, you know, multifamily, well, there's really, it's really more than just a straight multifamily, there's structure and there's other components to it. So, it's not a, it's not a real clean fit. And David raised a really good point. If, if we're going to go, go down the road of putting a lot of thought into this, our feeling was maybe the best thing to do would be define sober living facilities, separate them from other drug and rehabilitation facilities that, you know, maybe are more intense or are at different stages of, of that kind of life cycle of, of, of being, being an addict and then getting treatment, and then, and then going in the facility and getting out of the facility and going back into society, and, and because there are, there's a lot of different type facilities. And that would help to control, and it would help to, you know, determine appropriate locations for these facilities, because right now, these facilities aren't, really aren't dealt with in our zoning ordinance. And they're important, it's important that, that they're considered and placed in appropriate zoning districts. So, that was our, our thinking was, it's, it's a bit of a challenge to kind of just to make, to make an interpretation, and it may be more appropriate to come up with accurate, reasonable definitions, determine what districts they're, they're permitted in, and amend the ordinance. That was the, kind of the way we were leaning.
Mr. Edmonds had asked you earlier about the Shelby situation, or Sterling that they're in. Could we, if we haven't at least researched that, to see how they've looked at this facility and what they've done, just as, you know, maybe, so we're not reinventing the wheel, but see what they've done, and maybe we agree with it, and maybe we don't.
Certainly.
But I don't know what they've done.
Now, just, just as I indicated, we, we don't want to tie ourselves to a particular property, here I'm going to reference a particular property, so, talking out of both sides of my mouth. But they, they have indicated that they're interested in a larger-scale facility. The one that we visited in Shelby clearly was a single-family home in a single-family resident, in a single-family neighborhood, that essentially was like a functional family. Six residents, you know, sharing, sharing kitchens, sharing, sharing kind of a common goal, you know, same type of lifestyle. You could, I could argue, that's, that's, for all intents and purposes, that's a family. When you start talking about 24, 25, 26 people, that's not a family anymore. That's, that's more, so, that is, that would fall under a different, a more intense definition. Just like you have, for adult foster care, you have, you have small group homes, you have large group homes. I would suggest that you probably, you probably want to come up with verbiage for sober living small facility and sober living large facility, and deal with them a little bit differently.
Mr. Schultz?
All right, take a step back. Does the state of Michigan define and/or license sober living homes?
They, there is a, we are licensed as residential treatment. On their application, there is a halfway house, transitional living, I think even three-quarter But it's just very loosely defined, it doesn't, it doesn't really provide much in terms of definition, so.
In Brown, I...
But there are a lot that are out, I think we're the only ones in the state that are licensed and accredited.
By whom?
We're licensed by the state, we're accredited by CARF. And that is a national accredited, accreditation entity that accredits rehab facilities, hospitals, outpatient clinics.
So, if I understand what I think I heard, the state doesn't define a sober living home, but they license sober living homes?
They license levels of care.
You know where I'm going, Brett? We're going back to a group daycare home, which... We're going back to our group daycare home, which has been 10 years and we can't define it. I mean, we have them in the city, and we've been kicking it down the road for a decade. It's been indicated that we already have these facilities in the city and don't know it.
There's hundreds. Not, not in Troy, I'm just saying, in the area, there's hundreds of them.
Are we aware of other ones in Troy right now?
I'm not. Can I, building on that example, using, using that example of daycare, we've got family daycare, family daycare homes, which is, you know, care of children, one to six. And we've determined that's by right in a single-family home. Then we've got larger ones that are seven to 12, and the planning commission has determined that those aren't appropriate for single-family residential neighborhoods. But there are commercial daycares that are not in single-family neighborhoods that are of, of any size. So, using that kind of, you know, that loose, really loose logic, you could, you could kind of logically, if you apply it to this, you could say that a sober living facility that was between, you know, one and six or one and eight people, you could look at it as a single-family home that would be appropriate for a residential neighborhood. And then when you go larger than that, maybe it's not appropriate for a single-family residential neighborhood. But it is appropriate in a, in a more intense, non-single-family residential neighborhood. So, if that makes any sense. So, I, I hear what you're saying. I think what?
So, when it comes to daycare homes, and correct me if I'm wrong, we really don't have any control right now because city council never took any action on it. We made a recommendation, but city council has never done anything.
Well, no, we actually.
There's a definition of group daycare home.
There, there was action taken. What the, the action, there was an amendment to the ordinance that found it. It's been a while, and it's a bad memory. I mean, ugh, bad memory. But what they basically said was, those, those facilities that were licensed and, and non-conforming, I didn't say legal non-conforming because they weren't legally approved, but those non-conforming uses that were in existence at the time could continue, but they couldn't get, you couldn't get more. So, at the time, I believe there was 18, and those were allowed to continue, but we couldn't get new, new applications. The zoning ordinance does not allow those facilities. It specifically lists them, it, it wasn't an oversight. If you look at our table of scheduled uses, they're specifically prohibited in the city of Troy. The difference with, with sober living facilities are, we're silent on them in our zoning ordinance. So, so the question is, for the planning commission, are these uses that we believe are important to permit? And if so, where is the appropriate district that we permit them in? And are there any standards that we want to associate with those, with those uses? And then before that is, we need to define what they are, so that everyone understands what they are. So, if the answer's yes to the first, you know, to the first question, are these important and should we, should we permit them? Then the next step is where, which, which districts, and how?
Do you think a definition might drive the location? I'm just, maybe just reordering.
I think the definition would help drive the location. I think the size and the intensity would help drive the location. I mean, I think, I think the only, the only, going back to our site visit in Shelby Township, the only thing, in my, my, my experience there, that kind of jumped out was the amount of cars parked in front of the building. But keep in mind, we visited the site. There's four planning commissioners and three staff members, and we drove there. So, my, I mean, I'm not going to speak for them, but there was, there was a SUV parked on the lawn, and there was, there was kind of parking all over the place. But my guess is, they knew we were coming, and to accommodate our, our parking on that private street in front of their house, that they, they kind of, it was an exception, it was kind of a one-off, one-off thing. I, I think what, what the intent would be was for these homes to look and function like a, like every other home in the neighborhood. You drive by, looks like a home. Doesn't look like a sober living facility, looks like a home, functions essentially like a home, and, and, those are my thoughts.
I was just curious, and if it's an inappropriate question, please let me know, but is this funded through like Blue Cross and Blue Shield for the residents? Is, is a residential part of them stay funded by some, just like insurance?
Two parts to that. There's a, the residents, the residents' fee, which is not, and then there's the treatment, which is.
The treatment is covered. That's good.
Right. The, the ones that we have have insurance, so.
Yeah, that's covered.
The clinical gets covered.
But the residential part of it?
Residential part is.
Movement boards, so to speak, is, is not.
We should make clear too, that it's not, we're paying a very good amount of money to be there, so we're not, you know, that's $850 a month. You can get an apartment in Troy for a lot cheaper than that. It's, it's a want to be there. It's a, it's a decision we make.
Just curious. Thank you.
Can I add one thing? You guys are talking about like, how many would you have in a house? We know, based on my experience, you have too many people in a house, even the, the outcomes will go down. I know houses that, the house that you guys were at, smaller than that, that holds 16 people. That's true. Four in a, in a floor and a bedroom, and I stand, I'm too high. It's too much. We've looked at that, and it just doesn't work. So, I think some of the clinical program standards would maybe go right in line with some of the things that you're thinking. You don't want too many people in one of the houses. Well, we don't either, because it just doesn't work there. It's not natural enough of a setting.
I'm going to inject a segue in that. The larger building here, if my memory serves incorrect, you said it could hold possibly 29 residents?
Yes. This is, this is.
That's a whole different animal than what you're talking about tonight, especially in terms of outcome, isn't it? How are you going to resolve that?
No, I think, I'm sorry. I think what he was, I was thinking for him for a half second, when I interpreted it and understand it. If it, if the facility is not adequately sized to accommodate the number, that's when you have deficiencies in results.
So, it's not the number themselves?
Correct. It's, it's the, it's the, it's ample room.
The density is what you're talking about in this. Okay. That makes sense.
A four-bedroom house has 16 people in it, four per bedroom.
That's too many.
And those, they're out there. So, yeah.
My, okay. My first blush, a facility that holds 20 or 24 or 29 people, it's not a residential facility, it's a business, it's a commercial establishment. It, it is, it is not residential. I mean, I defy you to find a single residential home in this city that has 29 people in it. And this, this is, this has been an office building, and just a little bit of background for you folks that weren't here before I-75 was built. Rochester Road used to go straight through, and that piece, I don't know that it's the same building, but that piece of property is where Bill Price had his first funeral home. There used to be a white clapboard house that I believe has been reskinned and wrecked, but that is the, that was the, a private home until it was taken over for a funeral home back in the late 50s. And then when the freeway went through, he had to move because his business couldn't survive on a dead-end street. Just a little bit of Troy history that nobody cares about.
Well, in this case, you'd have the requirement for one to six and six to 24, so you would have it in a different. That's my, that's my thought sitting here. I mean, I haven't put pen to paper yet. I wanted to get input and have, have this dialogue.
And similar to, to multi, for senior housing and for, for adult foster care, we have, the number of residents is tied to the lots per foot.
Right.
And/or the, the building size. So, I assume, we went down this road of adding this as another use, we would put similar criteria attached to this use as well.
One of the comments, I think I asked the question on our, on our tour, again, not, not focusing on the property, but I'll bring up the property. And, and the property that we're talking about is very, in very, very close proximity to, to hotels. And, you know, the, the type of sober living facilities that these gentlemen are talking about, sometimes residents live there six months up to a year. So, and they've got, you know, the common, common roommates, housemates for a long time, and they're returning to the same house every day, they've got jobs, they go to school. And next to them, you've got hotels where you can have 100% turnover of all the guests in a 24-hour period. So, this, in this location, it's next to two hotels, but, and, and the residents and the gentleman here agreed up when we were doing the tour, that this is significantly less transient than the hotels that are, that are in the areas. So, it, it makes for an interesting comparison. You've got, in this case, if it did move forward, you'd have a residential, residential-type facility next to two hotels, and the hotels are much more transient, you know? So, more coming and going, more trips, more, more of everything than, than this.
But if we approve residential facilities called a sober living home, we cannot approve it for these three particular parcels. We have to make it legal throughout the 33 square miles of the city. Is that not correct?
That was the direction that we kind of arrived at, because, because basically, in, in our interpretation, and Ben, feel free to chime in, in our interpretation, we were really, we listened a lot to what we, what we heard from, from, from these, from these gentlemen, and that was kind of going into our decision. So, you know, we, we were really basing it kind of on, on the, on the, the way that that functioned and really tying it to this operation where it, it just seemed like we were kind of putting all our eggs in one basket in terms of, of how we were interpreting it. It was based on one specific user, where, again, when you interpret an ordinance, it's really, you're setting precedent for any other applications that come around. So, it just seemed like, it seemed like a, like we were kind of setting ourselves up for some, for some issues moving forward. Whereas if we came up with a definition, with, with assistance, you know, from professionals, but we came up with, with definitions, we defined them, and then we, we amended the ordinance appropriately and, and put them in appropriate districts and, you know, probably for the larger ones at least, by, they would, they'd be approved by special use approval so that there was, you know, public input and awareness and all that. But it just seemed to make the most sense to, to do it, to do it that, that way, where we come up with the verbiage and, and apply it across the board rather than interpretation. That was kind of our thinking. But again, we wanted input from, from the planning commission because you do have, you know, you do have the, the authority gives us, the ordinance gives us the authority to have input from the planning commission, help us make determinations. So, I mean, the planning commission felt strongly like, no, this is, it's clear, we should interpret it this way, and majority thought we should interpret it a cer, a certain way, we would, we'd listen to you.
Well, Brett, is there some, a specific question that you'd like us to respond to tonight as far as what your next step would be?
Well, I guess, I guess, I would, I, my question would be, what do you think of our, kind of our, our finding that maybe the best way to go would be to define sober living facilities and other, other facilities, define them, come up with standards for approval, come up with appropriate districts, and, you know, special use versus, versus by right, and then come back with, with a draft for, for consideration by planning commission? I mean, the first question, I guess, is, do you, do you agree that these are important to have, to permit, to permit in the city of Troy?
Absolutely.
I mean, is there anyone around the table?
Yeah, I think form follows function.
Very impressed, yeah.
Along with interior designer now?
Well, I'm picking up a lot of stuff from my interior designer. With that in mind, you know, if you talk about maybe creating a new ordinance, that size seems to be the driving function here. Just by way of example with the foster care and the daycare, one to six, it may fit well in a residential area. Six to 12, six to 14, maybe it's going to be in an area with dense living like condominiums or duplexes or apartments. And then if you've got a big one, maybe 26 and above, maybe you're looking at a commercial district somewhere, maybe even light industrial or somewhere on the edge, a business district.
I think accordingly, you have parking requirements and trash receptacles and all those things that go along with those uses, with high intensity uses. Like you said, if there's a parking issue, the bigger issue with a larger resident. And I think that only follows, you know, the logic.
Mr. Schultz?
I would encourage you to use the tools we have and find out if in fact there are, with perhaps a Google search, if there are any states that have definitions of what a sober living home is, and then approach communities similar to ours, like Southfield, Farmington Hills, West Bloomfield, Sterling Heights, Rochester Hills, and see if they have any definitions. Because I don't, I don't necessarily see taking a blank sheet of paper and starting a definition as being the most expedient or efficient way to go about that.
A question, are there any of the accrediting associations that have definitions of a sober living facility?
They define it as community housing, they keep it kind of broad. But I know many places where you can look at for definitions. I know California and Florida have a lot of sober living facilities there, and I think the state and local governments are very involved. So, there's a lot of definitions out there, and there's some, a lot of overlap too with those. I can help get you those resources.
I appreciate your assistance.
Okay. I'm just curious, is this more of a medical facility or a counseling facility?
It's more, it would be more of a, there's like, there's a medical model, that would be a medical facility. This is more of a, like a social, psychological, it's more of a.
It's probably more psychology.
Yeah, it is. But we do have medicine too. I mean, there is, there is medicine for those that have psychiatric issues. But it is designed primarily for psychosocial interventions.
Edmond, do you have a question?
Yes. This particular facility, this particular piece of property and with the facilities on it, I think, I don't know if you can come up with a general classification like it would be used in a neighborhood or not, but I think in this particular instance, it's like a, it acts, it's almost like a buffer, a, a good buffer between commercial and residential, looking at it on this piece of property. Because you are taking a, a billing that's, if I'm not, if I'm incorrect, let me know, it's zoned office now, and under a special usage or something like that. I think this is a good buffer between the hotels and, and everything else that's going on over here. And I think that there's going to be other pieces of property in Troy that we're having a hard time finding a usage for, that something like, something like this might really fit, you know, fit in as a good piece of the puzzle. So, I think we have to look real careful at it, but I think this would be a stabilizing influence in that area over there.
Well, any other comments, or do you have enough to, have any other, maybe others who want to ask us?
I guess, I, I agree with, I think, with Mr. Hudson's angle of, you know, the, the smaller one to six, maybe, or one to, one to six is, you know, residential, seven to 12 or whatever the range is, maybe more multifamily than, more than that is.
That's how we, I mean, that's how we treat adult foster care. It, it's a special use if you're over six people in certain districts, it's a permitted use if you're under six in certain districts. So, that's kind of, I think, we do something similar with this. And with, similar with adult foster care, there are specific special regulations as a part of that too. So, that's kind of the angle we would probably approach this.
I might suggest that we talk with these gentlemen, because we're looking at it from that perspective, but if we say the, the six to 12 would go in this zoning district, what does that zoning district allow, as far as building size or property size, and does it fit?
Right.
The, the two have to dovetail.
Right, right. Yeah, and I think, I haven't asked them specifically, but I'm going to guess that, you know, they want to move on this. If we can continue, you know, move quicker rather than slower, they would probably appreciate that. Am I right?
Do they own the property?
It's business.
Option. Do they have, do you own the property, or do you just have an option to buy it?
One, the homeowner is actually in attendance of one of the properties proper here, the Nelsons, Jim and Sue. We have, we have purchase agreement executed with them with a due diligence contingent. We have a purchase agreement executed with them with a due diligence contingent upon your approval. So we're anxious, we're very passionate and anxious to get this going.
How about the larger property?
The larger property likewise, we have agreed upon, you know, agreement with them, contention on approval from you. So, and then if I could, while I'm speaking, I think Ben was onto something when he was talking about, you know, what you currently have and kind of in your system now regarding other uses, and Brent as well, to protect yourselves in this. I'm sure they're going to come up with some things that would be, for instance, akin to your convalescent care. What's the land area per resident? So you have, you know, you get control that, you know, someone's not putting, you know, five, trying to stuff, you know, into too small a bag, five pounds, you know, 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. So, you know, you got control from the land, open land area basis, from an open area basis, so that, you know, residents do have room. So again, they've got all that, and they're the, you know, professionals on how to do that. So I'm sure they're going to come up with something sort of.
I think at the, at the site visit, I think Mr. Hudson asked about, are these people violent or are there schizophrenia? I don't hear much about the mental health part of this. Can somebody talk to that?
I did some statistics. About 90% of those that have substance abuse problems have some mental health problems. Now, not all of them are severe.
Did you say 90?
90%, but not all of them are severe. Some may have anxiety disorders, probably moderate level of anxiety. That sometimes kind of fuels the substance use. You're anxious, you do drugs or alcohol, it actually makes you feel less anxious. So you can't just treat the substance abuse, you've got to treat the anxiety too. But we do have some that may have more severe mental illness, and that's where you get into bipolar. Some, we've had a couple that have had psychotic disorders like schizophrenia. Statistically, the research out there in terms of violence, if, you know, if they're in our program and they're stable in terms of they're taking their medications or following the program, they're no more a risk than the general population. Somebody who's untreated typically is, they're not in our program. If they're untreated, then they tend to be more of a danger to themselves than others. Somebody who's psychotic sometimes can't appreciate right from wrong, or they're delusional thinking that something's happening that's not happening. They tend to harm themselves. But it's extremely rare. We haven't had any incident of violence from our clients in terms of, you know, stemming from their mental health.
And again, speaking to the screening process, if there is any history period...
Yeah, they wouldn't be appropriate for a program. They'd have to be, they have to be psychiatrically and medically stable to be in our program.
One of my problems is, and Brent, maybe you can help me on this. Would this, would the neighbors nearby, and I know there aren't a lot of nearby residential neighbors, but there are several, a few anyway, would they be notified if we amended our ordinance?
Well, so, one of the parcels we're talking about is zoned residential now. One of the parcels we're talking about is zoned office. Most likely wherever we go with this, it will require rezoning on one of those parcels. As part of the rezoning, there's a notification requirement of 300 feet. So with the rezoning, an ordinance text amendment, and a special use, there's probably, there's going to be ample opportunity to notify neighbors.
And then a follow-up to that question, would the applicant be willing to meet with nearby neighbors to talk about their issues with this?
Sure. In a open forum, maybe?
You're suggesting personally? You're with them at your home?
Quite often the residents will get together, you know, they'll have a meeting at the school or something like that. Would you, would you be willing to meet with them?
I, I would be willing to talk to them about what the program is and the types of people are there.
Because I'm sure once, you know, this is, becomes public knowledge, this kind of a facility is going in, there are going to be concerns or issues. And many times, just meeting with the applicant to resolve some of those issues really lessens the concerns.
Are you suggesting that we be proactive and contact them, or do you, we make ourselves available?
I think, I think both. They probably won't come to you once they hear about it, but it would be good if you would go to them. I don't know if there's a neighborhood association there, but I would think that...
I would probably follow the same guidelines with regard to notice, for instance, is it 300 feet? And make those people, contact those people probably by letter too, and invite them to contact us to learn more about who we are and what we do.
But if you look at this particular parcel, or parcels, 300 feet is probably only going to affect five or six residential properties. Because, well, they're, they're very deep, they're quite wide, and immediately to the west is an apartment complex, so that's going to be one owner who probably isn't going to care. As long as these people continue to pay rent, he's going to be happy. The hotel and the hotel and whatever the building at 2500 is, I don't see that many residential properties being affected in this particular location. If you're going into a residential setting, 300 feet has a whole different impact.
2500 is professional engineering associated, so it's their ability.
And one of them is...
You've got to be careful of those engineers.
The Scottish side.
Sorry, yes.
All right. Are we good? Brent, you good? Let's go. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
That's very expensive.
Thank you.
Maybe.
Love them, Jacks.
Just to get information. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, ready to move on, gentlemen? Item number nine, code of ethics for the planning commission.
Yeah, this one, I might, I may lean a little bit on Sue on this. If you, aren't you glad I told you about this, you know, right now? No, basically, we had, we had a meeting, a study session, and Lori Bloom, the city attorney, was here, Sue was also here. We talked about planning commission ethics, and we talked about, it was mentioned, I forget who mentioned it, maybe it was, maybe it was me, maybe it was the planning commissioner, I don't recall. But we talked about a planning commission code of ethics. And we talked about perhaps even, even having a code of ethics or a list of requirements that planning commissioners could sign. And we mentioned that. We actually, I think we talked about maybe having something ready by, by early January, which, you know, we weren't able to do. But we, I talked to Sue about this in preparation for the meeting, and she, Sue reminded me that the city council adopted a code of ethics for city council, as well as they adopted a code of ethics for boards and committees. And you provided a copy of that, and you've all had a chance to look at it. And my, my understanding is, is that this will be sent out to all board and committee members, and you'll be asked, all board and committee members will be asked to sign this document. So, is that, was that the agendas?
Brent?
That was in the agenda, yes.
Last document in the packet.
Brent, if I could also continue on this, there was a little confusion because basically the last time we met and talked about this, we were not sure that they had adopted this, the code of ethics for boards. And I was under the impression they talked about it at city council, but they never adopted it. So when I went to talk to Eileen Bittner, our clerk, about the senior, she checked the minutes and found out it had been adopted. And then the next question was, well, why didn't it ever make it to you folks? And apparently to save postage, they're going to, this is the time of year that they do your disclosure statements. You're going to get it with your disclosure statement to sign and send back both documents.
Are we really that bored?
Yeah, well, I think some of it was just, there was a time where I don't know that anybody, they were changing the procedural rules, and I think there was some confusing, confusion. So I had Eileen Bittner go back and check, and when she checked back to the minute, she said, yeah, it had been approved. So they had approved it. And it's a little different than what they approved for themselves. They have a couple, they've changed the language to reflect boards rather than city council. Theirs, I noticed, if you were able to pull it up, they've added two at the bottom about using media, your computers and things, and emails and things carefully.
Is it pretty much a carbon copy except for the added items?
Yeah, the two at the end, but basically, other than changing it to reflect it's a board thing rather than a city council.
Right, but it says appointee, anybody who's appointed.
Pointe, right, it's for all and all boards apparently are going to be signing.
I think I got a request for a renewal of the disclosure statement about three or four months ago.
You did?
Yeah. Anybody else get one?
I think that was, if you're interested in being reappointed. That's what I get three or four months.
Oh, you're right, Phil. That was what it was.
Yeah. She is working on getting them to you, so.
Is there a requirement that they be mailed?
No, I think it's just easier for her to get them out to you that way. And I can follow up.
To bring them to a meeting and have them sign them and turn them back in?
Yeah, I think she views that as her responsibility, not Brent or mine, because it's a council rule. So she has to collect them from you, not us.
And she's looking at the big picture. She's got to deal with all the boards and committees.
Right.
Some of which don't meet very regularly. So she wanted to do it all at the same time, I think is where she was coming from on that.
And she also wants to make sure those disclosure statements, even though there's some information on there that I think you have to give your social security, those are not released to the public. So there are some things that she needs to take in. So if they're, if you send them back together, she'll make sure that some of that information is released.
Bob, did you get a chance to get, pull up the city council?
No, my machine has each letter about this big, and I don't know how to get it out of that, so.
You're on the large front.
Yeah. I know I'm old, but I need one letter at a time, yeah.
He's reading 9,000 point right now.
I'll switch with you, Bob.
I turned that other computer on over there.
That's fine.
Is there anything, you had mentioned, you thought there might be something in the city council? You're good with it? Okay. But my question is, if we have to sign this to satisfy city council, do we still want to proceed with a planning commission-specific code of ethics in addition to what city council is expecting? I wouldn't think so. I mean, code of ethics, I think one code of ethics for, for this group. I mean, does anybody feel that we need a separate code of ethics for this group?
I really don't, but I, but I, but I know we talked about that. Are you looking at the APA?
We're looking at the Michigan Association of Planning.
Right.
Community planning code of ethics.
And I think those, those who are in that meeting packet where we originally discussed this, Sue went over.
Well, I mean, let's ask the obvious question, is there something in there that you feel should be in this code of ethics for the planning board? No, I think, I think this is adequate. I'm just saying that the list of 10 things we have here is much more specific to planning than it is to just being a city appointee.
No, I, I think these are fine, but, you know, just for the administrative standpoint, it's easier for Sue to, or for Eileen Bittner to do that. I think this is fine. I think this is...
Is everybody good with the one that was presented in the packet?
Yes.
Common sense is definitely...
And ultimately, to be removed from planning commission office. Is that the right word, Sue, office? Serving as a planning commission member, you know, you're removed by city council by demonstrating misfeasance, malfeasance, and I think there's another feasance in there there.
They're watching a newbie or something.
So ultimately, you know, it's, it's a city council, they've approved the code of ethics. That's the board that's going to remove the planning commission, so it does kind of tie it all together.
All right, any other discussion on the code of ethics?
So, just wanted to quick follow-up. So this would be signed every three years then, when you come up for reappointment as planning commission members? Or is it, is it something that's done annually?
I took her just mean that it would be during the term of your office. Even though I believe you'd do your disclosures yearly, don't you? So, but I, because even the form says term expiring, and when I read it through, I took it to mean you'd only have to sign it until your term expired, and so when you came up again, you were reappointed. But I will check with her and find out.
It would make sense, and I don't want to speak for our clerk, it would make sense that when you get sworn in, and you get your identity card and all that, is you sign this.
And she may adopt that procedure. I think because this is the first year it's going out to the boards, she wanted to get it out and explain it probably in a letter.
Well, I think it's good that it's going out right now, you know, to everyone that's involved. No surprise.
Just one little point of interest, I did go in and get sworn in this morning, and I found out that we only, we don't have to be sworn in if we were sworn in before.
It's a reappointment, you do not have to...
That's right, that's what I understand.
They haven't told me that.
It's in the letter, and I guess they didn't differentiate the letter. For, for new appointees, they have to be sworn in. Because that's what they indicate as one.
Have you done it every time you've been appointed?
Yeah. Well, maybe you're a special case.
What do you mean?
They just like the square.
All right, other business tonight, item 10, public comment. Is there any comment regarding items that are currently on the agenda? No? All right. And then we'll close out the evening with any planning commission comments. And Brent, let's start with you.
I've spoken way too much tonight.
Yes, you have. I, I have one thing to say. I just think, I think Brent undersold a little bit the, the report that goes, the planning commission report that goes to council. I think it's one thing to look at the number of cases that go through, and that's important. I think the more important thing, the service that the planning commission provides, it takes, the quality of development when it goes to the planning commission process is exponential, and that can't be stressed enough. And so sometimes the city council doesn't see the before product as compared to the after product of the planning commission. So I think it's important to remember too, that that's really one of the main goals of the planning commission too, is to really make projects better and serve as a highly part of the community, so I think that's important.
I'll add that paragraph for next year.
Thank you.
Here, here. Bill?
Well, I was happy to see that I was reappointed, and I was just curious if anyone else, or is there a new member that was appointing, other than the members that are on the board?
I don't think so.
Wasn't replaced, were you replaced, Joe?
We're all here.
Congratulations.
Three incumbents were reappointed.
Mr. Shipp, any comments?
Uh, no. I, well, I, on this, this facility, the people we're in on this facility today, I think that some situations are going to be, could be maybe incorporated into special usage. And I'm not the most, I don't have the most experience on the planning commission, so a lot of times I'll sit back and just listen. But when it comes to neighborhoods, those neighborhoods are something that we have to really, really seek to protect. And then we're going to have to get real tight on restrictions and requirements if we rezone, able to rezone them for neighborhoods. I can see where the neighbors would have some concerns on them.
Question, there's a home in our neighborhood run by the state, and I don't remember, I mean, I was there when we moved into the neighborhood. Does anybody remember what kind of issues they had with the neighbors? Was it...
I don't know what facility you're talking about.
Group homes?
Six people.
Yeah, and they're all handicap.
Those are, I mean, when this, we do this, I'll do a little research, but while he was talking, I went online, there are 38 group homes in the city of, some of those are larger. They listed like convalescent homes, but in the residential areas, there were quite a few. And if you want that site, there's a way you can go online and just put in Troy, they'll list all the addresses for group homes there. And he was saying you're not allowed to have those. was saying you're not allowed to have those, the state doesn't, the state licensed those, and we're not allowed to disapprove of them, so, because they're considered family homes, so there are quite a number of them, and if you want that website, I can provide it to you, so you can go online and see where they are, and you can actually go into the system and find out if there have been any complaints about them, but I'll get that website for you next time.
All right. Mr. Schultz, anything? Mr. Hudson? Nothing? I was curious if there's been any further discussions with Tim Hortons? I know I haven't had any, but maybe...
Zero.
No, they're scheduled to come back at the next planning commission meeting, and at that point, they'll either present a traffic study, or hopefully, if they're not going to present a traffic study, we can get a letter from them saying that they're not going to present a traffic study, and they're looking to probably take, have the planning commission take action. Because ultimately, it goes to city council for final approval.
I just was, you know, one of the things, I think, one of the questions that was asked at the end of the meeting was, was it the dimensional thing that had to be, that was the stumbling block in terms of the staff, and I think you indicated that that was one of the priorities, you know, the number of stacking spaces. So they haven't, you haven't?
I've had no communication with them that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything, gentlemen, so have a good evening.
Thank you.